Yeah.
Yeah, I was talking to her over there.
It is dark.
Yeah. Kind of funny. Change. Oh, how you doing? Fine. I'll think of something.
Yes, of course.
Okay, good evening and welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting for the city of Victorville, February 12th, 2020. I'll call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Eric Kurth.
Here.
Vice Chair Marsh.
Here.
Commissioner Wells.
Here.
Commissioner Huber. Commissioner Harriman.
Here.
And we'll start with an invocation led by Commissioner Wells with the pledge allegiance by Commissioner Huber. Please rise.
Dear Father God, we gather here today to do the business of the City of Victorville Planning Commission meeting. Please give us guidance, direction, and the things that are best for all in our communities. Ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Flag and repeat with me.
Side of the United States of America and the public who reach its ends.
Next, we have a set of minutes that need to be approved from the January 8th, 2019 meeting.
I make a motion to accept as presented the January 8th minutes for Planning Commission.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wells with a second by Vice Chair Marsh to approve the minutes of the January 8th, 2020 Regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have the reorganization of the Planning Commission, which would include the selection of Chairman and Vice Chairman. Is there anyone that would like to make a nomination for the position of Chair?
Kurt, it seems like we just did this, but I guess we didn't. I'll nominate Chairman Paul Marsh.
I'll nominate for Chairman Commissioner Kurth.
And so do we take a vote on each one of them separately? Are there any other nominations? The appropriate thing to take?
Correct, yeah, since there's no more nominations, you would let him vote on the first one.
Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Marsh for Chairman?
Well, we first need a second.
We have a second on Commissioner Marsh for Chairman. I'll second that, as long as you're willing to accept. I believe that's what we do, we ask if... Is that correct?
Yes, there's time for comments before you do the motion, so that's appropriate.
The nomination, and there's a nomination second. You want to accept that nomination or do you...
I'd like to make a, we can make comments first. I like, I mean, I like the, as far as the, as far as the understanding and the knowledge that you have, that Commissioner Kurth has already governing the Planning Commission.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that confidence. I wanted to give you a chance, though. Okay, the second nomination was for myself. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe that was unanimous, so I would stay on as Chairman. Thank you all for your confidence. And now we'll move to the nomination for Vice Chairman.
And just for the record, that was a motion by Paul Marsh, right? To nominate Rob Kurth for Chairman?
I'm going to make a motion for Vice Chair Paul Marsh.
I second.
My reasoning for... That's why I nominate Chair, but... Other Commissioners, that's...
Okay.
We have a motion by Larry Huber with a second by Denise Wells to name Paul Marsh as Vice Chair for the Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, that was just a little bit painful, but not half as bad as what happened at the council meeting. With their reorganization. Okay. Now moving on to some real business. Item number one, staff report, please.
Thank you Chairman Kurth, fellow Commissioners. Item number one is case PLAN 19-00051. It is a site plan with an environmental exemption to allow for the demolition of an existing restaurant building and the new construction of an approximately 5,000 square foot restaurant with a double drive-through lane. This is located at 12180 Mariposa Road. The applicant 4G development is requesting approval to develop a Chick-fil-A restaurant on a one and a half acre developed site previously occupied by Marie Callenders. The site will include the demolition of a 10,000 square foot building and the new construction of the 5,065 square foot building with double drive-through lanes for extra vehicle queuing capacity. With the agenda, we passed out today an additional memo, staffs requesting that they, an additional condition be added. Item 22 would, I'm sorry, Condition 21 that would require the protection or replacement of the existing lighting that's along the southern property that's shared with the Chick-fil-A restaurant. We've discussed this with the applicant and they're accepting of this condition. So with that, the proposal development meets all municipal code requirements. Therefore, staff recommends approval as conditioned with the added condition added. And we're available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on Agenda Item Number One. If the applicant or any representatives are here and would like to speak to us, you're welcome.
Good evening Chairman, my name is Don Eichler. I'm with Chick-fil-A. And congratulations on continuing your chairmanship.
Thank you.
I know it was, I thought we were going to see a coup there, but I guess not. So, we're very excited to be here Commissioners. We've been looking in this area for, going on 10 years, trying to find the right location. So we finally settled on this location. And we're excited, not just about serving the community, our great food, but also looking for an opportunity to give back to the community. So, prior to coming up here, just a quick story. One of the gentlemen that's potential franchisee for this location, we spoke on the phone. He's actually from Victorville, so that would be awesome if that, that comes to being so. Anyways, we've, we've, we've read the conditions of approval. We understand them and we agree to those, so I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? No, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to us on Agenda Item Number One? Okay, seeing no one, I'll, I'll close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to the Commission for a determination.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber with a second by Vice Chair Marsh to approve the site plan portion of case PLAN 19-00051 with the added condition. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And that's been passed, so I just wanted to say your, your 10 look, or your 10-year look that you mentioned created a lot of pent-up demand over that decade. And since, since the announcement a week or two ago, there's been a lot of excitement in the community. So, thank you and welcome and good luck. Agenda Item Number Two, Staff Report, please.
As Chairman Commissioners, Agenda Item Number Two, Planning Case 1900034. It's a conditional use permit in a site plan with an environmental exemption
It's a conditional use permit in a site plan with an environmental exemption to allow for a new express car wash on property zone C2 General Commercial. That's including the demolition of a vacant restaurant located at 14812 Bear Valley Road. The applicant has worked with staff and the adjacent proposed Avid Hotel to reserve, to, I'm sorry, to resolve certain access issues since the last Planning Commission meeting. Staff recommends approval with the revised conditions number six and number 30.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Then I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on Item Number Two. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mike Scarborough with 3K1 Consulting here on behalf of Quick and Clean Car Wash. We have been working very much hand-in-hand with staff on several of the issues on-site and the adjoining development, which I think is the case after us, the hotel site, to make sure that everything is in sync and working properly, circulating well, and in an overall great development for those two parcels. We've reviewed the stipulations that staff's put forward. We're in agreement with them in addition to the two new stipulations that were added, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Commissioner, have any questions? I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. Scarborough. Is there anyone else here to speak to us on Item Number Two? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission.
I'll make a motion for the staff recommendation, recommendation of the, to find the project categorically exempt under Sections 15301 and 15332 of the California Environmental Quality Act entitled Existing Facilities and Infield Development Projects and Adopt Resolution Number P19-064 approving the conditional use permit proportion of the case number Plan 19-0034 and Adopt Resolution Number P19-065 approving the site plan portion of case number Plan 190034 subject to the attached conditions of approval along with the added conditions under Approval Number Six. Is that correct?
Could be Revised Site Plan Conditions Number Six, Number Thirty.
Revised Plan Number Six?
And Thirty.
And Number Thirty? That is my recommendation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wells with a second by Commissioner Huber to approve case PLAN 19-00034 with the revised conditions. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's been approved. If you can pass it along, that, welcome to the community and, and good luck. Item Number Three, please.
Chairman and Commissioners, Agenda Item Number Three, Plan 1900044. It's a conditional use permit in a site plan with an environmental exemption to allow for the development of an 87-room hotel on a vacant property zone C2 General Commercial. It's located north of Bear Valley Road between Mariposa Road and Cottonwood Road, and it's behind the existing Starbucks, Starbucks there. The applicant has worked with staff and the, the car wash you just approved since the last Planning Commission meeting and has resolved access issues as well. Staff recommends approval as conditioned.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? I'll open up the public hearing on Item Number Three. Hello.
Hi, good, good evening, everybody. My name is Manoj. I represent the Omenia Development and my client for this project. Basically, like, I want to thank you for all your staff. They work very nicely and they help us to give a lot of guidance to make it at you. But if you have any questions, let us know. We are accepting the all conditions.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak to us on Item Number Three? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and, and bring it back to the Commission for a determination.
I'll make a motion to find the project, find the project categorically exempt under Section 15332 of the California Equality, Environmental Equality Act, SEQA, entitled in full development projects and Adopt Resolution Number P-19-062 approving permit portion of case number PLAN 19-00044 and Adopt Resolution Number Three, approving the site and 19-000 subject to the attached conditions of approval.
I second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Marsh with a second by Commissioner Wells to approve case PLAN 19-00044 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's been approved, and once again, welcome to the community. Good luck on your project and to both you and the car wash. I'm, we're all very happy to see that the old, dilapidated, degraded, and abandoned building that's now sitting there will hopefully soon be gone with some new life along Bear Valley Road there. Thank you. At this time, in, in compliance with the Brown Act, it's necessary for the Planning Commission to make available time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that fall within our subject matter jurisdiction. Is there anyone here to speak to us tonight? Okay, with that, we'll just move on to any comments by Planning Commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Wells.
Um, no, I really don't have too much to say. It's still winter time and keep warm and enjoy being on the Planning Commission.
Commissioner Marsh?
Just a thank you to the city. I think it was the city, but that, that did this. It was that major cleanup along the wash that, that's right behind the church on Marip... that just kept growing and growing and growing along the wash by there, and I saw a bunch of trucks and... Other thing, in conjunction to that, it seems like a lot of that trash is going down into the wash area.
We will relay the information to the appropriate parties. I'm not sure who did it at this point.
Commissioner Huber?
Nothing.
Nothing? And Commissioner Harriman?
I just have a question on the junior high school getting demolished. Um, there's a bunch of people on social media saying the city is at fault for that. True. Kind of sad to see that go. Part of history in Victorville.
Any, any comments from staff?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, well then, thank you, everyone. With that, we're adjourned.